Any changes or corrections to the minutes? None being, all stand as approved. Time of the meeting is a public comment. This is where the public has an opportunity to come forward and speak with the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. We give you five minutes. If you do come forward, please state your name.
Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Gilbert Valerio. I'm the emergency manager for Fannie County. And the purpose of my visit here is to extend an invitation to the city commission because we're going to host a training, March 10th, in the Fannie County EOC. It's geared towards elective officials and decision makers. In the event that we do activate the EOC, we're going to explain some of the roles involved, the ICF structure, the incident command structure. The last time the EOC was fully activated was 9/11, so there was a big turnaround there. A lot of people changed. So I'm extending this invitation to the city of Garden City. Fannie County Commission has agreed to show up too. And the whole commission, I'm going to extend an invitation.
What time?
It'll be at 4:00 PM. We're going to look at 4:00 to 8:00 PM. We're going to serve dinner.
Oh, well then.
Well, yeah.
And that's March 10th?
That's part of the bribery.
Yeah, March 10th.
March 10th.
And the location will be in the ELC?
In the ELC.
Down in the basement area?
Yes. And I'll send out this little invitation that describes what type of training is going to be provided. Someone from the state is going to provide the training.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Gilbert.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? Okay, on that comment.
Sergeant in arms.
Yeah, I know. Hire that person.
I am 6A Mayor Commissioners, Rebecca Colbert, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland, Request Governing Body Consideration and Approval to Allow the Mayor to Proclaim the Month of February 2015 as Girl Scout Cookie Month.
Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation to proclaim the Girl Scouts Month of February 2015.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned to second, any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed. Can you just go down and read it and they can come up? Caught the whole game with you, didn't I? I'll read the proclamation. Here, if you want to come over here. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls in the United States and around the world, has been an active part of the Garden City community. And whereas, through the Girl Scout Cookie Program, girls learn about business, goal-setting, the value of teamwork, and money management, all of which helps them become leaders who are confident in themselves and their abilities, use their knowledge to affect change in their lives and the lives of those around them. And whereas, through the support of generous donors and annual product sale activities, such as the Girl Scout Cookie Sale, the Girl Scout Organization is able to offer quality programs on a year-round basis to girls in all racial, ethnic, culture, religious, and socioeconomic groups. And whereas, the city of Garden City is committed to supporting the programs provided by the Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland, and encourages our communities to support Girl scouting and its annual money-earning activity, the annual Girl Scout Cookie Sale. Now therefore, I, Roy Sessman, Mayor of the city of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim February 2015 as Girl Scout Cookie Month, and encourage all citizens to support the annual Girl Scout Cookie Sales, which begins January 31st and will end March 8th, and making an investment in the lives of girls, and upholding the enterprising spirit of Girl Scouts to remain a self-sufficient organization. Signed and sealed this 3rd day of February 2015, Roy Sessman, Mayor."
There you go.
There we go. Somebody want to hold this? Hold it. I guess they don't need the proclamation.
Thank you much.
Thanks. All right.
Oh, well, thank you.
I'll take a second box.
More? You better give it to some of these people out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten minutes.
Thank you, and good luck in your sales, okay? You're welcome.
Mayor Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the month of February as Career and Technical Education Month.
And I know we have somebody here to kind of discuss that a little bit. You want to come up, Deb?
Well, thank you for a few minutes before the city commission. I do appreciate the proclamation that this is CTE Month, our Career and Technical Education Month. We all know that our main goal is to provide an education that integrates academics with technical skills and workplace skills, so that our students are college and/or career-ready. And that 85% of the jobs today require some type of post-secondary education, so that we're trying to prepare our students at Garden City High School just for that. So, thank you for the proclamation. We have lots of activities. Many of our students in our career tech ed organizations are in competition this month. Our students in business, FBLA, just returned from a competition, as well as our culinary next week, and our FFA, which is all year long. We are having a celebration, so to speak, to develop partnerships, and that's called building bridges. And that will be April 30th, and so that will be a community-wide, county-wide effort to bring in industry and business partners, and community partners, parents and students' families as well, to learn more about our pathways and the opportunities for students to participate at Garden City High School in the different career technical pathways and programs of study. So again, thank you for the proclamation.
How many, how many students are in that program?
An unduplicated count, total Y, is approximately 1,200 students. But if we look at a duplicated, students in more than one career and technical education class, then it's about 2,200 students. So, all students almost are in
One.
One course each semester.
That's fantastic.
It is. While we have wonderful opportunities at our high school for students to explore, and that is the real meat of it, to explore and find out not just what you might be interested in, but what you find out you're not interested in, before we graduate, hopefully graduate all of them. So, thanks, thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you. Do I hear an entertain to make motions?
I'll make a motion to make February as Career and Technical Education Month.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, all, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 7A, it's my honor and with some bittersweetness that we announce that Superintendent Public Grounds Alan Guyer has announced his retirement effective April 1st. We are happy for Alan as he sets out on his retirement. And, you know, I just personally want to say that I, you know, can't compliment highly enough Alan and his staff over the years, having really kind of transformed the green spaces, not just the parks, but the green spaces, rights of way in this community. I feel that it's really what the community is known for, out of the public improvements that we have, really kind of the way the community looks. And so, we certainly appreciate all that Alan's done for us over the 27 years, and we wish him well. His resignation or notice of retirement letter was included in your packet. And anyways, I think it's Alan here. There he is. All right, so you can come on up and say a few words if you'd like, but I mean to be the first to say thank you and congratulations on your retirement.
It's a little bittersweet, but, you know, I did say in my letter that I enjoyed my career with the city. I liked to, I got the opportunity to use my botany degree, and I had a lot of good people to work with, hard-working people, and we did take pride in our jobs. And I've probably mentioned to you guys that some of it is smoke and mirrors. Wherever the event was taking place, it looked nice there, but because it's a big job, it's a lot of property to take care of, so I just want to say thank you, and thank the staff and everybody for their support, and especially for all my crew members that made my job easier, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item 7B, Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to publicly introduce, you already know women, know that for some time, the strategy within the Parks Department was looking at a way to replace Alan. He was kind enough to plan way ahead on his intentions to retire in 2015, and we were successful in recruiting the long vacant, often debated during budget season, Forrester position, and really took the strategy a couple of years ago to use that as the succession planning mechanism for the Parks Department. We were fortunate to recruit back to the city of Garden City, Andy Lee Belt, and it's hard enough to get hired by an organization once. It's far tougher to be hired back a second time. Once everybody knows, you know, you always look good on paper, but once they get the real you, when you leave, it's tough to get hired back. And so, the, yeah, you join in short and they stay in slow. I'd like to introduce him, come up and address the commission, Andy Lee Belt, who has for about a month shared the title of Superintendent of Public Grounds with Alan Guyer, and publicly welcome Andy to the management team.
All right, thank you. I didn't plan on saying much, but
That's part of the training.
Yeah. So, I do thank you for overlooking whatever we needed to overlook to bring me back a second time. And to be back in southwest Kansas, it's really, it's really always been home. Home is where you make it, but southwest Kansas has, there's something, something inside that calls me back here. And so, thank you for that opportunity to bring my family back to a slower lifestyle and enjoyable place to live. And I look forward to doing what I can to fill Alan's shoes a little bit, and hopefully someday be able to fill him out all the way, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 7C, Mayor and Commissioners, it's a big honor to recognize Toby Witheun for his having achieved Class A membership status with Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America. Of course Toby's the superintendent at Buffalo Dunes, and we all get to see the end product of his labor, which is fantastic and celebrated, not just locally, but throughout the state and throughout the country. So, this is a special occasion for Toby and his professional advancement, and just wanted to say congratulations. And if you don't mind, tell me a little bit about the Golf Course Superintendent's Association certification levels and what it means to be a Class A, because it is a big honor.
Our certification levels are Superintendent Member, Class A, and Certified. Superintendent Member, there are no, I mean, if you're a superintendent, that's what you are. Class A is a years of service plus continuing education and some pest management requirements that you have to meet to get bumped up to Class A. And then Certified is just more continuing education on top of that, so.
Well, congratulations. Item 7D, I'd like to invite Fred Jones up to provide us an update on emergency repairs at the swimming pool, which were authorized at previous commissioning. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to give you an update on what's happening with the construction of the big pool. The decision to investigate if repairs were necessary was based on observations by the water manager, which is myself, over the last year or so. We went back and developed a history of water use at the pool and found that our water loss at the pool had continued to get worse. And I worked with John Washington in Monaco with Garden City Recreation Commission for them to do some additional testing, and they had arranged this fall to have a pressure test done to the system. That pressure test was done in December, and the results were not promising, and that, the results of that pressure test led us to develop the proposal that we presented to the commission on the 20th. So, the work that has taken place since the 20th, you can see in the pictures that were attached with the memo. I think that work was authorized on Tuesday, after the meeting Tuesday afternoon. Thursday morning, they were out cutting concrete, so they got their contractor in and began cutting concrete. As you know, when we talked on the 20th, we had, we had sent a proposal out to some local contractors, and Dick Construction had responded to that proposal to make some small excavations in the pool. They opened up four different areas in the pool, about a six-by-three-foot areas over the pipes, and everything that was exposed indicated that we had problems. And so that is where you see the big trenches opened up. Where we're at today is all the old pipe is out of the pool. The new pipe is staged in the parking lot, I understand, and they'll start installing new pipe forthwith. At the meeting on the 20th, the commission authorized city staff to make emergency repairs to the big pool at a cost not to exceed $100,000. That initial contract that we, that was negotiated with a lot of help from, actually, all the help putting the contract together came from Steve Patrell and City Engineers Office. That initial contract is amounting to $72,134. As we worked through the project, we did consult with the engineer, Waters Edge Aquatic Design, that had initially prepared the master plan, the long-term master plan for the big When we started this project, we had considered doing a direct replacement of six-inch line under the pool, getting rid of the six-inch cast iron, replacing with six-inch C900 PVC. Some more discussion with Waters Edge, as we've been working through the project, led them to recommend that we consider upsizing that to eight-inch PVC. That can be done for relatively little cost, and it doesn't require any modifications to the trenches or anything that's opened up now. So we've made that modification. Additionally, as we were excavating over along the sidewall areas, there's connections here, here, and here. Right now, we're into this area here, and if you remember, oh, thank you. If you remember the old, the way the pool is now, this sidewall area here is all sloped in, and there's a curb down here that this pipe, recirculating pipe runs through. In order to make the connections for these pipes, we've had to expose these areas here to make those connections, and we found that this pipe here has some issues. That pipe has broken out just to the north of that connection. Additionally, we found that those pipes are about 50% full of debris and a lot of rust, calcium buildup in there. Matt, I don't know if you can go back to the photographs that I had?
Which one do you want?
The ones of the calcium. There we go. On the pipes, there's a six-inch pipe that runs along the walls of the pool, and there's these inch-and-a-half outlets. These were installed in the late 70s, they're PVC. Structurally, they're okay, not a lot of issues with them, but internally, you can see that they're
They're very functional.
Not functional at all. They're completely filled. This one came out of the west wall of the pool. This one came out of the east wall of the pool. So it's universal that there's a huge issue with circulating water. Additionally, there's outlets that come out of the pipes in the bottom of the pool. A lot of those had quite a bit of calcium buildup on them, but not anything like what we have seen in the sidewalls. The sidewalls seem to be pretty consistently
Are there pictures of those?
Yeah, there's a few pictures in there, if you go down.
Fred, can you clean those? There's nothing, no way.
I don't think so. I think, I think cleaning them would probably destroy them. They're, you didn't happen to bring one up with you?
No.
They're, it's like, you pick it up, it's like a solid rock. It's actually, it's all calcium, and it probably has, has to do with the way that the pool is chlorinated, and they use a tablet calcium, and that adds to the issue. There's also just hard water, the hardness of our well water. That buildup is adding to it as well. That where Matt's cursor is right now is a floor drain. It kind of shows you what's going on with the, sorry, not floor drain, but a floor inlet. That shows you what those floor inlets were looking like as well, so they're probably, I would estimate that to be 50%.
I mean, we're going to have the same problem. Ten years.
Are they going to do something different to chlorinate?
The discussion we've had with Waters Edge Aquatic Design is some additional monitoring of the pH levels in the pool, and Steve had a more in-depth conversation with them, and he can, he can probably fill you in on the chemistry aspects. We think what's happening is just because the circulation had been so degraded that the information the pool operators get inside the pool is not the same as what's coming from the treatment, because nothing is getting into the pool. So they think they're working with one thing, and they're working with another. They're not getting the full benefit of the piping to show what that treated water's looking like.
For sure. I think I was said, I'll put it in the form of a question, what, going back and replacing the pipe, what makes us think that we just aren't sort of starting over
Starting
Destined to have the same thing occur within X number of years?
That buildup can be addressed through making adjustments with the water chemistry.
So, our abilities to adjust water, test and adjust water chemistry in 2014 are maybe better than they were in 1970, whatever.
Yes.
So that's what would help control the calcification of anything new we put in there.
Keep those samples. Show, if the guy gets in charge, you know, might want to look at those. This is why we do this.
Yeah.
She's sitting right here.
Oh, good, good.
I'm not making jewelry out of it to help with the fundraiser.
This is something that's occurred over a number of years. The other thing, I, you know, we can't really speak as to historically what's happened, but, you know, that pool has been treated using various methods of disinfection over the year and years, and of course, every method of disinfection has its side effects in terms of maintenance and what can be done. You know, what we see in the pipes, we can't attribute to something that's happened in the last 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. It's a, it's a sum of the total of what's been happening there. So, I think people are a lot, I think there's a lot more information, a lot, a lot of information that operators can use to prevent that, and having, having a more modern material in there gives them some options as well, as far as being able to add some acids or other things into the water to adjust the chemistry. Our understanding is it's all contingent on the pH of the water, and keeping the pH adjusted properly is what prevents the buildups. This is obviously more of a base, you know, if you're talking about going from acids to base, this is more of a base situation. Acids would be not finding any pipe under the pool at all. So that's just some
And there are some instances of that, but they probably weren't as a result of acidity. It was just broken line, blowout.
Some of broken line, a lot of, especially what we saw when we were looking at the floor inlets indicates that there was some issues with those floor connections staying intact with that, with the, with the main line, whether that was through some kind of a shift in the ground, or the heating and cooling of concrete, that they just, a lot of them broke off.
So that picture, is that totally broke? I mean, it looks like it's totally separated from them.
Yeah.
Or did you guys cut that out?
That does, that does look a little worse. If you look at the bottom, you can just barely see the bottom of the pipe. The bottom of that pipe fell out. That's a corrosion issue. The top of the pipe, you have a pretty big break in there, but you have to be mindful that when they saw cut the concrete, they, to make that saw cut, they came into the pipe, and as they excavated out, it broke.
Jackhammers have
Jackhammers.
Detrimental thing to talk about.
So, are we on track then to, are we on track for timeline-wise? How are we doing?
We're making excellent time. I think Steve and I are both pretty impressed with how quickly everything has come out. As it stands today, they could start putting pipe in right now and tie everything back together, and we would be significantly ahead of schedule. We had talked about trying to have this project done by, April 1st was our dream deadline. May 1st is our, is our heart deadline to get everything going. But the reason we're here today is to talk about the additional issues we found with these, with these lines running along this wall and this wall. So this here and this here, these lines in here have some problems. What we're proposing right now is to, while we have this exposed, is to go ahead and replace this line down this wall by setting a new line on top of the existing curb. And if you go to the last page of the memo, there's a cross-section diagram that shows the proposed solution. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at the wall from the side, a new eight-inch line, instead of six-inch, a new eight-inch line would be set up here on the curb and plumbed in. To cover that line, then we would propose installing a new stem wall here. That would serve two purposes. It would square up the pool and provide a normal, modern sidewall for the side of the pool, and also give us an area that we could place our improved piping. And that would be covered with a, with a new deck material, concrete deck, and that would complete that west wall. The reason we're wanting to discuss completing that west wall right now is in the pool master plan, the fifth phase of the master The fifth phase of the master plan for the pool is to separate out this lap pool at some point in the future and make it a separate pool from the rest of the open areas. This area here in the master plan was identified as being a current pool.
Lazy river.
Lazy river. That area could still be used for that. This area would be divided off. This would be the diving well. Since we have, this is too much, the rest of this area is too much for us to complete this year. But since we have this open now, we feel that we could complete this wall, make all the repairs that are needed, and then when future parts of the fifth phase come into effect, that would be done. Otherwise, we would, if we continue working towards that, completing that master plan, we would be going back in and destroying recent repairs. And so what we're proposing is to square this wall off and have that be, basically conclude the repairs that we would do this year in order to have the pool open for the 2015 season.
You know, this is gonna affect the world's largest free, just beyond concrete swimming pool.
We affected that when we built the rain pool, the slide pool, and the bulkheads.
How much are you filling in then on that? Is it the whole red area?
Yeah. It's the Red Cross hatch.
So that's 10 feet of space?
Well.
Down the farm, it kind of angles in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, the, if you remember how the lane lines in the racing pool lay out kind of goofy with the wall. This new wall will run parallel with that, and then the yellow hatch area would run parallel, creating a rectangular pool that's actually a 50-meter.
Okay.
Have you addressed that, a flexible connection?
Well, we use packs and.
Something that'll move?
Yeah. Yeah. Flexible tubing as opposed to the rigid PVC. Yeah.
So how much?
And that's really more the, more problem in the floor lines than it is the ones in the wall, because basically the wall is completely, the current line is completely encapsulated in concrete, so.
Do we have a price for this?
Contractor estimated an additional $75,000 to do that work, which is what we're asking for. So that would bring our authorized amount to 175 if you approve.
Well, the bid was on 72.
Well.
This is additional work.
This is additional, and, well, you're also, well, you have unforeseen conditions as you're going along, like we've got about 20 feet of pipe we now have to replace that we, wasn't included in the original bid. You know, there are just those unforeseen. And one of the other goals is to hopefully seal some of the joints in the shallow end to help cut down on loss through the floor. So.
In the shallow end with the, when we investigated what was happening there, this line over here, we noticed there was a small void in here. That would need to be filled. And then those, some of those joints along there, we'd like to make some repairs there to help improve their watertightness. There's also a joint along this area that has some material that was put in probably in the early, late 80s.
Eight years ago.
Okay. It's pulled, it is separated, so we'll have to pull that material up so it's not a hazard. It's a fiberglass material, and that being loose on the bottom of the pool would not be good if we had someone cut their foot or cut their hand on it. So we plan to remove that, that area of bad material and make some temporary repairs now until we would, until at some point, if the commission chooses to go ahead and continue completing the phases of the master plan. At that point, then, we would look at completely recoating, resealing, repainting the bottom of the pool. Hopefully, that will be not an emergency repair, and you won't have to deal with me on that issue.
Can you still do all this by April 1st, or?
We can get the Red Cross hatch worked done.
On the west wall?
On the bottom, the piping on the floor and the west wall, I don't know if April now, but certainly.
Certainly before May.
Before May and not affect pool season.
And we have had good construction days. We've had some cool days, but we haven't had a lot of issues that would create a situation down there where they can't get anything done. So I think today, there's not a lot of activity going on there. Every other day since then, it's been all hands on deck, and they've gotten a lot of work done.
Swearing up those, the west and the east side, is that part of the master plan?
Yes. Yeah. Essentially, all of these crosshatch areas are from the master plan drawing. I didn't include that in this memo, but if you remember from a couple weeks back, I had that one in there. Yeah. All of the pool separations and bulkheads and things like that are part of the master plan.
But do you have a hard bid for this?
Uh, no. But.
What we're asking for as a part of this report is that what we're identifying is 5A, which is the bulkhead to the west of the Red Cross hatch, to be considered for, as part of the emergency repairs. And we're coming to you with sort of an amended cost not to exceed from the previous meeting and incorporating this, because we feel that at some point, which is evident, that the commission decides to make additional repairs of some combination of Phase 5, you'd be ripping out the repairs you're making this spring. So it would seem prudent to a good use of public funds to go ahead and incorporate this piece. There really isn't any other portion of Phase 5 which constitutes an emergency or has a like argument for making it now. And it, and we feel that it needs to go through a public bidding process like any other public improvement, and we don't feel that it has enough of the elements that tie us to an emergency situation. So really, Phase 5, which is all of this bulkhead and decking piece of the master plan, we're breaking up into subcategories A, B, C, D, and E, and saying that A really fits the things that we're working on this spring in an attempt to get the pool open for 2015. The rest of it's gonna need to wait to get planned out by you through a budgeting process, and then if it's approved, the normal procurement consistent with our purchasing policy.
It seems reasonable to me that while those pipes are exposed, that we repair them now. It seems silly to cover them up and then dig it back out again. So I'd move that we include Phase 5 as part of the emergency plan.
5A.
5A.
I'll second that.
It's been moved, seconded to approve Phase 5A as part of the construction process and rehabilitation, emergency process of the pool. Is there any other discussion on that? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass. Thank you for the update.
Polar plunge Saturday.
Okay.
Not in that section.
Not in that section. I was gonna say.
It's in the entry pool in the slide area. Fire department will fill it up. It'll be really full.
All right.
There's a monthly sales tax report from Finance Director Melinda Hitz. Flex continued growth and sales tax receipts. Lots of meetings of note. The Live Well Healthy Community Design Summit is currently going on. Tomorrow morning, I believe, there is also a breakfast for Garden City officials. That doesn't show up on here, but I believe it's at 8 o'clock at the Clarion Inn. I'm not sure who else is attending, whether it involves selected officials. You're certainly invited. I know that a lot of our technical team and other people from around the community will be involved in that. But it's been great having Mark Fitton in town. He's been involved, actually, in some built environment issues for Garden City, but never been here. So we're glad to have him in town and have him continue to assess our community and efforts towards improving the built environment as it contributes to public health. The chamber banquet Thursday night, of course. If any of these things require an RSVP, ask that you do that through C-Lin. And if there's no questions on those, then we'd ask you to entertain approval of 8A, which is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, would be number 2381-2015A.
I think that we approved appropriation ordinance 2381-2015A.
It's been moved in second?
I'll second.
It was a second. Any discussion on appropriation ordinance 2381-2015A? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass. We're on to item number nine.
Item 9A, which approved would be ordinance 2685-2015, would rezone land from agriculture to R1 single-family, amending the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, district zoning map of the city, and repealing the current ordinance, comprehensive plan, and district zoning map of the city. Specifically, this addresses the property currently addressed 3201 East Spruce Street. Caleb?
I have the complete staff report near Packet and the opposed ordinance. This went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended unanimously approval of all six planning commissioners present. This is for the, the owner of the property is for a church, a glazia epitacostal United Hispanic Church. And so they're rezoning that to start the process of building their new facility there. Any questions on the staff report?
No questions?
Maybe we approve ordinance 2685-2015.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion on ordinance 2685-2015? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass. Item B.
Item 9B, which if approved would be 2686-2015, is an ordinance relating to Article 2 definitions, the Airport Operations District and the AI Airport Industrial District in the city of Garden City, amending the regulations and the code of ordinances. Caleb?
Yes, this is mainly has to do with the inclusion of accessory living quarters, adding that as a conditional use in the Airport Operations and Airport Industrial Districts as a conditional use permit, is how it's put together. This went before the Planning Commission and before the Airport Board, and was recommended approval with adding the new definition of accessory living quarters and creating accessory living quarters as conditional uses in the AO and the AI Districts. You have the complete staff report in your Packet. You have any questions?
But that just, is just at the airport, right?
Yes, this is just at the airport at those two specific zoning districts.
Okay.
I think we approved ordinance 2686-2015.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass.
Item 9C, which if approved would be ordinance number 2687-2015, rezones land from C2 General Commercial to I1 Light Industrial at 1620 Fulton Plaza.
This is, you have the, it's a complete staff report near Packet, and this is rezoning property to light industrial purposes. And this went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended with all five present unanimously to amend the zoning to, from C2 District to I1 Light Industrial District.
What's that? What's the use?
Right now, they're looking at uses that would fit into that industrial district.
Well, I know that.
So we don't have any specifics that we can.
Want to rezone?
Right. At this time, so. They've been given a list of the industrial district requirements, and they're comfortable with what is in there. This area is, everything's south of Fulton Street. You probably recall, we've done several rezonings back and forth from commercial to industrial. And it's shown on the master plan, it kind of go either way. It's kind of a mixed area along there, so.
I was just, you know, wondering about a ready-mix plant on Fulton Street, but.
Yeah, there, any of the listed items that would be listed under that, like several of the properties right beside it and down the street are all like industrial as well, so.
It may be I3 or something like.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I could look that up, give you that district classification.
I think a ready-mix plant is heavy industrial. I imagine it's light industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably.
So are we, maybe this is kind of future, and I know you said it's mixed, but are we kind of looking at, if you look, are we looking at putting that all light industrial or just that one spot there?
Just the area that's highlighted, in the area that's here in the yellow highlight is the only area being rezoned with this ordinance. Each individual property owner, we've.
Is different.
We don't look at it. These are requests coming from the property owner.
Okay. Just looking down the future.
Yes. We've tried that a couple times in the past to do a couple.
Yeah, we've attempted city-initiated rezonings in different business districts, neither of which were successful. So there isn't a lot of we-looking. There's a lot of considering requests that come from the property owners.
I'll make a move. No, go ahead.
I think that we approved ordinance 2687-2015.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion on 2687-2015? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thanks, Caleb.
Thanks, Caleb. Item D, which approved would be ordinance 2688-2015, regulates maximum speed limits in the city of Garden City. Specifically, this brings local ordinances in to match the changes made by the State of Kansas on Taylor Avenue. And Sam, if you want to.
He's not here.
Oh, he's not?
Really, it just aligns, it aligns that.
So currently, if someone were to receive a ticket in that area, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to adjudicate that through the municipal court. It would need to go to district court, I would imagine. So there isn't, we have to bring our code of ordinances, which outlines speeds, maximum speed limits, in compliance with what is actually out there. And given that it's changed to adjust the speed limit to the 85th percentile on Taylor Avenue, this matches it up.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2688-2015.
All right. Motion 2688-2015 to an ordinance regulating maximum speed limits in Garden City to comply with Section 86-14.
Is there a second?
Take it.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass. Item E.
Item E, which if approved would be Resolution Number 2620-2015, authorizes the removal of motor vehicle nuisances from the following properties: 2107 North Third, 2013 North Third, 318 North 12th, 505 Bancroft, 609 Pennsylvania, 615 Fleming, 820 Fitz, 601 East Maple.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2620-2015. Do I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2620-2015?
I approve Resolution Number 2620-2015.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion on Resolution 2620-2015? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed.
Item F, which if approved would be Resolution 2621-2015, authorizes the City of Garden City to enter into a municipal lease purchase agreement for police department equipment with Clayton Holdings LLC. This is for computer-aided dispatch and hardware. That was approved as part of the meeting in, the first meeting in November, I believe. Upon approval, the city's investigated alternatives for financing the purchase and we've received a rate from Clayton Holdings of 2.19% and would recommend its approval. Would anything add to that? And you've, I know you've looked at these programs and assessed whether or not lease purchase is the way to go. In your estimation, this is something that is ripe for using the lease purchase laws and the lease purchase tool?
And it is over a seven-year period of time. Software, we can't really go any further out year-wise just because it, you know, it gets old and we have to replace it. So, seven years and it's roughly around $150,000 a year payment then, with financing $980,000.
Currently, we don't have computer-aided dispatch? Or is...
Well, Chief, do you want to kind of update us on dispatch, on kind of where we're at with it and why we're...
Upgrading?
Upgrading, yes.
Why are we upgrading? We are upgrading because what, we wanted to do this 10 years ago, but we're going from a mainframe-based computer-aided dispatch to PC-based and essentially getting into the 21st century finally with our computer-aided dispatching. And it's, it's going to do so many more things with it and the information will be much more readily available for us in a more timely manner than it is now, so. It's badly in need of an upgrade and it's where we should have been probably 10 years ago.
Okay. And kind of efficiency and kind of safety as well, because you can get the information a lot quicker for the, for all the people out on the streets and stuff.
And it will, it will give, it will give supervisors an immediate feedback on what their personnel are doing, where they are, and it will also have a map of, you know, a GPS map of where officers are at the time, so.
All right. Any other questions?
With the 911 calls, will it be able to locate where that call is coming from?
We can do that now, but it should be a little more accurate with that, so.
I think that would be very inefficient.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I approve Resolution Number 2621-2015.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been motioned in second to approve Resolution 2621-2015. Is there any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed. Thanks Chief.
Item 9G.
In the way.
Commissioner has asked to consider Resolution 2621-2015 regarding the Western Area Power Administration allocation to the City of Garden City. Mike?
Where's that? 22.
My apologies. Resolution Number 2622-2015.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, good afternoon. Excuse me, as part of Garden City's overall power portfolio, the power that we purchase and receive, the power of everything in Garden City, a portion of that is supplied by the Western Area Power Administration. On average, that averages about 2.4 megawatts per year or per day that we receive that power. We've been receiving this since, oh, pre-1975 and it's the cheapest power that we receive as part of our portfolio. It's the least cost, it's the least expensive. The prior to making changes to KMEA, Garden City had allocated our Western allocation to Sunflower Electric, who in turn received it and then in turn sent it back to Garden City. In 2013, we, the City Commission at that time authorized us to terminate that agreement with Sunflower and have our Western allocation delivered to KMEA and then KMEA in turn deliver it to us. That's still, that's still current. What is, what's taken place and what's in front of you today is, the previous agreement was that we would continue to receive our Western allocation until the year 2024, which there's no issues with that whatsoever. However, in December of 2013, Western decided that they had enough commitment from everyone that they would extend that contract even further. So they want to extend this through 2054, which is a very, very long time. However, it's not uncommon for a federal power agency like that to do that. They give some assurances to those that's receiving it, that it's going to be there. Should something happen between now and 2054, Garden City would always have the option of saying that we no longer want this sent to KMEA, we want it sent to someone else or whatever the case may be, so it's not, it's not that you can't get out of it. This resolution just authorizes Garden City to continue to have KMEA be our provider of the Western allocation and that's really about it, but I certainly answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mike?
That was pretty straightforward.
Then entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2622-2015.
I'll make a motion to approve 26-2622-2015.
Go ahead. I know what you're going to say.
It's been motioned in second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Thanks Mike.
There's no old business, first new business item. A is the governing body's consideration and approval of the semi-annual report from the CDBG revolving loan fund on behalf of Great Plains Development, Inc. This is an administrative step in the Great Plains management of CDBG grants. These are the at-risk or high-risk loans, I guess is what they're called. The city and county both hold a CDBG fund, revolving loan fund, and there's a local board that considers these applications and makes recommendations to the respective boards, depending on where the business is located. And one of the criteria is that they couldn't otherwise receive conventional financing. I do believe the governing body has a representative on the Great Plains Board and I believe that's Commissioner Frank Hauser. So if you have questions about Great Plains, I would probably direct those to him.
I would like to make a comment. There, since we've got co-directors over there now, we don't really have just one person, we have two. They are making great strides in that organization and it's a lot better than it was. I mean, you can't believe all the problems that were under the previous director and so I've, I don't know, I'll probably be chairman of that next year. I'm vice-chairman now, so I'm running the meetings by phone.
Do you get any applications from...
A lot.
And are, I'm not seeing really any new ones on this list?
Yeah, there's some that we've got that aren't on this list, but we're screening them. I mean, some of these people that make these requests don't have any money to put down and I mean, it's like, you know, we're, it's just almost like you're doing a disfavor by loaning them money. So, we're trying to be a little more creative in the way we do it and, you know, they've got to have a credit score and a decent one and a few things like that. There's just a lot of things that slip through the cracks and...
They need to...
Yes. So that's why they're doing a good job and we're actually, this past year, paid a small profit, so. But it is risk capital, you know? We all know that, but, but you got, I mean, there's some people that, you know, you just shouldn't loan money to. So we're, we're just doing a little better job of managing, I guess.
So hopefully on the next report, I, I kind of had the same question as Commissioner Dahl, because I didn't notice any other, I mean, it's, it's been pretty much all the previous ones that were loaned to, I didn't see any new ones on there, so hopefully the next...
Well, it's because we turned them down.
Well, hopefully in the next report, we might see something new or hopefully...
We will. There's, there's eight, 18 counties.
Sure.
You know, it's not just Garden City, so we've got, there's a lot of other, a lot of other people that are requesting.
Okay.
It's working better, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Appreciate your involvement on that committee.
We have to approve the semi-annual report, so we need a motion to approve the report from the CDBG.
So moved.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Approved.
Park and Tree Board has three vacant positions and this particular agenda item asks you to consider filling two of those. And the recommendation coming from the staff is that the board rec, excuse me, recommend appointing...
Pat Guyer?
Pat Guyer to fill one of the vacant seats and then a reappointment of David Miller to the seat he's held on that board.
I hear a motion to approve Pat Guyer and Mr. Miller to the two positions on the Parks and Tree Board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed. Item number two.
Golf Advisory Board has a vacant position. It's their recommendation to appoint Larry Johnson.
Is there a motion to approve Larry Johnson to the Golf Advisory Board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed.
Item 11C is the consent agenda. I don't believe there's any additional additions.
Yeah, there's one on the...
Number three, I need to, can't will them in.
Okay.
I have a quick question for each seven and eight.
All right, so let's pull seven and eight off and then the minutes can reflect that Commissioner Frank Hauser abstained on item three. Is that right? Randy?
Yes.
So the items one through six, then items nine through 14 double Y as part of the consent motion. If you're so interested.
Okay, I approve consent agenda C1 through six and C9 through 14 YY.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on the motion of approving C1 through six and nine, C9 through 14 double Y? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed. And Commissioner Frank Hauser abstained on item number three.
All right, item C7, the governing body's asked to accept a sidewalk easement on the east side of Terrace Place, south of Long Boulevard, and either Steve or Caleb, could you help us with this? Or did you have a specific question, Commissioner?
Is that, I didn't have a chance to drive by there. Is that sidewalk, is that in the front? I mean, the apartments, do they face that sidewalk or is it on the backside?
No, this is on the street side. We have two locations where the trash dumpsters are on the sidewalk.
Okay.
And they have a, there are some handicap tenants as well as normal pedestrian traffic and the property owners have requested a way to get the sidewalk around the backside of that, those dumpster locations, so this is merely an easement to build the sidewalk on private property behind those two dumpsters.
Okay, okay. That's what I was prepared about.
Yeah, it's condominium association, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to discuss A or just, we'll approve item number seven. Is there a motion to approve C, is it C?
Yep.
C7?
That's correct.
I approve C7.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? Passed.
Item 10, right? 11C8 is, is a bid regarding the Windsor Hotels T Grant and Steve, I'll let you introduce the side.
You'll remember that the city is the recipient of a transportation enhancement grant for the Windsor Hotel. All the local match is being provided by the Fenton County Preservation Alliance for the current grant amount as well as the incremental, increasing cost from this supplement. Due to the time it took from when the grant was initially authorized, actually getting to bid and several rebids because of snafus along the way and the architects had covered or incurred significant more expense because it would basically designed and bid this thing like three times before we actually succeeded in getting a contract. In addition to that, once we get in and get work started, then we uncover things and are able to see more of the problems in that building. So, we've had some additional structural engineering expense to, kind of, not necessarily the kind of engineering on the fly like I'm doing at the pool, but now that we know better about the conditions of the building, we can more adequately address those. So, both the architects and the structural subconsultants are incurring additional expense to the project. This merely acknowledges that and again, the Preservation Alliance is responsible for all of those extra funds.
So this extra amount is coming from the Preservation Alliance?
Yes.
That's my question.
All right. Is there a motion to approve item 11C8?
I approve C8.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been seconded. Any other discussion? None being? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Nay? That item passed. Okay. Any other, anything else? Nothing else on the agenda? We're on to Commissioner reports.
That's right.
Commissioner Dahl.
First, I'd like to thank Ellen Geir, who is here with the City of Garden City. He definitely has left a very large and lasting imprint on our city that has set our community apart from so many. He has beautified our city and thus has made us very proud to call Garden City home. Thank you, Ellen. I'd also like to congratulate Todd Whiton, is that...
Toby Whiton.
Okay. On his membership in the Class A of Golf Course Student Tenants of America. Sure, golf courses in very good hands. And I'd also like to mention the Live Wealth Healthy Community Design Summit. I was able to attend last night's session and so much information that we are gaining from what we can do as a planning part of our city to help encourage people to live a healthy lifestyle and... a healthy lifestyle and I'm looking forward to learning much more about it and hopefully we can implement that sometime in our community.
Okay. Commissioner Frank Hauser.
I'd also like to thank Alan Guyer for his service. You know, that's one thing I think Garden City's noted for is their clean streets and their landscape and that just doesn't happen. It takes somebody with some dedication, so appreciate that, appreciate the work Toby's done and he's being recognized for that. Also, this morning's session, they talked about something that kind of caught my attention. They were talking about Main Street and changing the direction of the diagonals. Have you ever seen that done? Backwards. So, you pull and back into your stall.
Yeah.
And the advantage of that is that when the kids open the doors, they're pointed towards the sidewalk instead of when you open the doors now, you're pointed towards the street. And also loading your car, if you have something in the back, you're backed in. When you leave, you look to your left, you can see, you pull out. I, I've never seen it, but there's cities that have already done it and we're getting ready to re-stride Main Street. I can't imagine what KDOT would say about this, but I, I don't know, it's something to think about and I'd never seen it done. I'd never even heard of it, but obviously some planning department has done it.
You have to be an engineer somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
You have to dark flight that for a center. Nearly getting a career.
But anyway, I thought it was something very unique and it would definitely get people's attention.
The city manager actually practiced that.
I did. It seemed like it knew it, you know?
I saw that out there.
And we need to authorize another emergency repair.
Isn't it not as easy as it looks?
It's a thought provoking concept and, you know, your initial reaction is, oh my gosh, that's a dangerous back, backing movement into oncoming traffic to which the response is, it's the exact same movement you're making now blind into traffic where if you make it when you park, you at least have them in your rearview mirrors as opposed to hoping and going a little farther.
I don't know, I just thought it was.
Yeah. Thought provoking.
I never thought, I just, I don't know, I never thought about that, but it's.
Certainly much safer for cyclists, certainly much safer for pedestrians and, yeah, it's, but it is different and as we've made things different, that's in and of itself is, is.
Makes it unique.
Clean off the strides and point them the other direction.
Pay your teeth though, so we'll, we'll visit with folks when we get to that stage and see what the appetite for.
Backing in.
Something that promotes walkability in the downtown maybe.
Yeah.
Might be interesting. Anything else, Commissioner Hauser? Commissioner Dale?
All right, I agree with Commissioner Hauser and Commissioner Dahl on the previous things that was discussed, we referenced the, the losing of Alan Guyer and congratulations to the golf course superintendent and to the Girl Scouts and all the things they do. I certainly appreciate them in the neighborhood that come by and con me in buying more than I need. But I do, I think it's a good thing for them. I'm going to miss Alan Guyer personally because I've known Alan for probably most of his time that he's been here and he's, he's always been a, an individual if I walk up and have a grass problem or a tree problem, he always takes the time and I know he does that with other citizens, so he's, he's going to be greatly lost and I wish him well in his future. I want to thank the, the city staff and the Garden City Police Department and the Fire Department for, for their conscientious thoughts and prayers and the amount of work that they put in to, to pay respect to our brother Ronnie at his funeral and, and doing the things that are necessary in that type of a format and these are like, like military veterans that die, they get all the respect from, from the country or the community that they're from, but we also pay that same respect to our fallen individuals, employees and just happen to be Ronnie as a fireman and, but I, I'm sure that, you know, those that are out there in TV land that's listening that, that what we did would be nothing different than we would do for any other fellow city employee because we're all a big family and we would certainly show that respect to that individual. And I know that the city is doing what they can for the grieving families, so I think we've done our share and a fair share at least and they're in our thoughts and they will be for a long time. So, I thank the city and, and the police and fire department for doing their share. They're very, very professional. Thank you.
Did you see where another fireman died? From a heart attack back in eastern Kansas. It's kind of unusual for two of them, right?
Again, I kind of did all of what the other commissioners said, so I'm not going to really repeat, but we do have an outstanding staff, it shows. And we are losing and what we have lost, staff members either through retirement or the sad loss of life. But we do have a great staff that every day they go out and make Garden City a great place to work, live and, and raise a family and proud to be a city commissioner and mayor for Garden City. I did welcome the people to the Live Well Summit this morning. It's, it definitely, Mark Fenton definitely opened your eyes to different possibilities of ways to make Garden City a more walkable place, more probably inviting place or a healthier place and that's what the whole summit's about. But, yeah, that's pretty interesting, so especially some of the other ideas that he kind of threw out there.
Two hours worth.
Yeah, I won't go into it. I do have one thing that this evening, the incoming Kansas Commissioner of Education will be here in Garden City at Horace Good Middle School at the Courtyard. He's doing a tour of Kansas and communities and this evening at six o'clock at Horace Good, he will be in Garden City to have a conversation about education, kind of the future of education on where we need to go. It's open to the community, community leaders, education leaders, parents, and what they'll be doing is taking those conversations back to Pika with them and building a state strategy on education and where we go from here and how we, how we educate our kids to, in an efficient manner. So, I encourage everybody to come out this evening and be a part of that conversation at six o'clock at Horace Good Middle School. Other than that, that's all I've got, so I will call this meeting adjourned unless commissioners have anything else. None?
Three.